Round set.
Okay, thank you very much, Lauren. Good afternoon, everyone. Sorry for the late start. Michael, thank you for being able to join us. I'd like to call our already under rental school project building committee. It is August third. I think it is five thirty two. Next item is roll call.
Okay, Carol Duggan.
Here.
Counselor Camilla.
Here.
Counselor Rana.
Here.
Kermit Woods.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Next item is public participation. There is nobody on the Zoom call right now, so we'll move on. Next item is take action on prior meeting minutes. We have one, which is the meeting of July twentieth. I would entertain a motion that we approve. The minutes is written.
I make a motion.
Thank you, Carol, in a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mike. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is take action on potential change orders. Rich?
All right, we have six PCOS for tonight. PCO one twenty-five is for RFI ninety-three. There was additional stage lighting found to be on the stage. These access doors flip up. The decision was made to remove the light fixtures themselves and reset the covers and refinish the stage over top of these. So this is a cost for the electrician to remove the cover, remove the fixtures and replace the cover back. The next one is PCO one thirty-eight. That's for an RFI. When we began working on the stage, the original design intent was that the return air was acting as essentially a plenum underneath the stage returning air to the air handler on the roof through a duct. When we began looking at that, the underside of the stage was covered in dust and it was decided to not run the return air under the stage, consulting with the engineer, obviously, on this, on this one. And brought the return air grill and put it into the wall to the left side of the stage in the cafeteria area. So there's an added cost here for the architectural grill. It goes on the wall. That's for the return. PCO one forty, the fabricator of the casework and the millwork in, which is largely at the, you know, the classrooms, the lobby desk, those sort of locations, the doors have a magnetic catch that holds the door shut. The manufacturer used a plastic catch. The specifications called for, I believe it was stainless steel. The product that the manufacturer did use was reviewed by KBA and Jennifer had comments on that stating that it was an acceptable product to use, but because it did not meet the intense of the spec, the mill worker offered up a credit five hundred and nine dollars, nine and fifty-eight cents to leave the unspecified product in place instead of replacing it. PCO one forty-five is moving some money between some allowances that we have with trade contractors. For the most part, we hit less rock than we anticipated when we were doing the site work, which is a lot of the drainage, electrical work out in the, in the site. So we're taking a credit back from our site work contractor for that. And we ended up hitting some extra or having to do some extra slab cuts and slab replacements inside the building. You'll see some photos on that shortly. But the initial allowance we had set up was for a square foot basis. We are going to go over that number. So we're shifting some money around to replenish those allowances. A portion of that is also coming out of the CM contingency to, to cover that. PCO one forty-six is for some exposed decking insulation. The roof deck is a gyp deck poured on top of a essentially a sheet of insulation and that insulation over the years due to roof leaks has become deteriorated. Some areas with mold where it's being removed, other areas where the loose fibers, you don't want to get them into the airstream. So those areas are being covered up with fire resistant poly. We're setting up an allowance to do that work because it's tough to quantify the work in, in these spaces. This is occurring in B wing, which is stage two, which we're finishing up this summer. And then the phase four, which is E and F wing, which we're starting this summer. So it, it was tough to quantify the exact scope of work here and the, the time and material it would take to complete. So we're setting it up as an allowance for tracking that as we go on time and material basis. PCO one forty-eight is for a future canopy peers. The concrete in the rebar is being set. This, this portion of the cost is just for the concrete and rebar. We are proceeding on T and M with the excavation to do this. So back at the beginning of the project, it was value managed out to not put a canopy at the front of the building as a cost saving measure. Based on where we are right now in the project, it's been decided to add back in the footings. And if the school or the town decides to do some sort of capital improvement there, they can in the future, remove sections of the sidewalk and access these peers to set up a canopy if they wanted to. Other than that, it'll be concealed under the sidewalk in the meantime and won't be any sort of visual or tripping hazard out there. Everything will be below the sidewalk. So this work, a lot of this work is occurring now, like the, the PR fourteen work we are going to have done before this students come back. So that's all I have on these. If anyone has any questions.
The, the last one, just so everybody knows, I actually asked for that. I know that we've always talked about trying to add the canopy back in and whether we get to add it back in or the board of Ed has to do it at a future date. It didn't make any sense to pour all the new concrete sidewalks in front of the building and then have them dig in back up when they decided to put it in. So this at least gets the foundation. There's four peers that are going in for a new canopy that actually is as designed, it is freestanding, so it will not attach to the building. The old one did, which to be honest with you, I never liked it that way. So I think this is a better design, but this, this was driven by me. And again, I think it's a good use of, of the money that we have available to us right now that we can at least get the footings in so they don't have to spend an extra eight, nine, ten thousand dollars ripping out what we just did. Because I think the school will see a canopy at a future day. If again, if not by this project, I think the board will take it on as one of their capital projects. And then the thing Rich didn't mention in one forty-five is that also is an allowance. So if it's, you know, we don't use all of it, it remains as an allowance that will come back to us. But if we use it all, obviously, there's, there's nothing there.
And one forty-six is that as well, being an allowance.
Correct. You, you did me. You mentioned one forty-six as a allowance. Carol?
I just have a question about one twenty-five. Those, the lighting that was at the front of the stage. So is that lighting now eliminated from the front of the stage?
So the overhead lights still remain or well, rather, there's new lights going in. The old were removed. New will be in overhead. These were like flip up doors that were on the, on the base of the stage. They were not on our original contract documents. So we were not, our, our contractors, obviously, were not anticipating those lights being there. The lights are being removed as we don't know if there is a chance that there's a mercury switch in there. So the old, old style lights would, when the, the door shut would automatically turn the lights off with the mercury to just remove the mercury from the building. There, the, we've in discussions with the owner have decided to remove the fixture itself and reset the cover back down.
Okay, I was just curious. I don't recall them being used in recent years. Anyway, but I was just curious about that. Thank you.
No, yeah. And we had talked with Lou and Lou actually had a consultant that he's worked with before that knew some stuff about the stage lighting and he's the, he's the one that suggested it's, it's highly likely that there is mercury in those and it's best to have that removed.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing none and I entertain a motion that we approve. PCOS one twenty-five, one thirty-eight, one forty, one forty-five, one forty-six and one forty-eight in the amount of thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and twenty-six dollars and ninety-five cents.
I make a motion.
Motion by Carol and second by, yeah. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is take action on invoices. I believe we have Myers, which is our monthly storage and maybe there's some moving in this one that looks like.
Yeah, Steve, this is actually the moving invoice for June.
Oh, for the move out.
Yes, and also moving the kitchen equipment over to the bus garage and several other items.
Okay, so let's take them individually then. For the Myers, I entertain a motion that we approve Myers for the move of June's furniture out of the building in the amount of eight thousand, five hundred and seventy-seven dollars and fifty cents.
Motion.
Carol, thank you. And a second by Kim. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. The next one is KBA's monthly invoice in the amount of sixteen thousand, two twenty-seven and fifty-five cents. So I would entertain a motion for that.
Move, so moved.
Thank you, Kim, in a second.
Second.
So thank you, Carol. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And
Thank you.
Last is Freeman Companies, which is our stormwater management. And then the amount of twelve hundred dollars. I would entertain a motion for that.
The motion.
In a second?
Second.
Second by Mike. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Next is architects update. Dave, I believe Jennifer is not being able to be with us. Oh, and hey, Mike, Jeremy has signed on. So if you want to sign off and get some rest, I hope you feel better.
Thank you.
Yeah, have a good night. And thank you for what you did. Welcome, Jeremy.
Hope you're better. Sorry about that.
It's okay. Uh, go ahead, Dave.
Okay, hi, everybody. My name is David Basetta. I am a construction contract administrator for KBA. Filling in for Jennifer here and Paul. Basically, we've, this week, we, we continue the ongoing duties of taking care of contractor submittals, responding to the RFIs as soon as possible. And we do visit the site at least once a week. I'm, I'm, I try to be there once, if not more during the week to take care of activities and any questions that come up during, during the day. We recently finished our review for applications for payments and the July billing. And we're constantly reviewing PCOS and trying to get them reviewed and recommended before you folks see them. We've also visited the site to review existing conditions and we did find some things that didn't match the documentation. So we were out there trying to take care of that. Some of these conditions required revisions to the drawings and especially the structural elements. So we tried to, we're trying to take care of that as quickly as possible. I can answer any questions if you have any, but that was just kind of a, a brief update of what goes on on a weekly basis here.
Okay, thank you, Dave. Anybody have any questions for Dave? Again, we know you guys got a lot of stuff going on out there and we appreciate all the work you're doing for us. Doesn't look like anybody got their hand up.
Good.
Or you got off easy. Owner, project managers update, Eileen.
Hi, everyone. So in between the building committee meetings, the last couple of weeks, of course, we attend the OAC meeting and also I had a move meeting today. Steve and I, well, let's see, Steve, Newfield, Lauren and myself, also my boss Jim, we met with the town manager today. Introductions and reviewing the whole change order process with him. We'll also be doing a walkthrough onsite tomorrow to get him familiar with the project. In, so as Dave says, in the OAC meetings, we're always reviewing the schedule, RFIs, the, the PCOs that turn into change orders. Trying to find solutions to the issues that come up particularly right now in the A wing, which is the lobby. The music room, which is going to be a third grade room, the cafeteria area and the EF wing that's currently under renovation. And also today, working to resolve some technology issues that happened with a couple of new DMarks that were pulled in. So constantly in contact with Craig and Lou's team. We also had a move meeting scheduled today. So our IT is set up to go in there eight eight. On eight fourteen, we'll start the FFNE. And the move date for Meyer to move all the teacher boxes and furniture is eight eighteen. We're also, Jason has a bunch of boxes that we're also going to bring over. And then on eight twenty-four, we're going to set up a temporary kitchen in the cafeteria and the health inspection is set up for that on eight twenty-eight. So there's just a lot going on in the next couple of weeks. Getting ramped up here. Also, we did approve the piece, the CO and change orders that came through the invoices. And then just working with Lauren, I am updating the budget. With constantly overseeing the testing agent and commissioning agent too, to make sure that specs are being followed and the equipment is being commissioned. Anyone have any questions?
Any questions for Eileen? Just so we're clear though, the move in is B wing only, right? EF, nobody's moving.
No, 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 the EF is, is under renovation. It's, it's the B wing and A wing and the cafeteria.
Yeah.
Yes.
All right. Thanks, Eileen. Construction managers update, Rich. The pitcher man.
All right. I got actually quite a few pictures for, for this meeting. So the, like Eileen and Dave both said, we got a lot going on with all over this site right now. We got millwork in some wings going on and we're doing excavations of slabs and others for some underslab piping to occur. So we're kind of all over the place right now, still averaging in that sixty to seventy manpower count every day. We've got plenty of crews working Saturdays as well, some on tens. Just trying to get all this, their scope of work done for this, this summer project. So first room you see here over in B wing, we do have the millwork is ongoing. So some ceiling pads have been dropped in. We're coordinating with the building inspector for getting the above ceilings completed so that he can do his inspections. We can put the rest of the ceiling pads in. You can see in this photo as well, we do have floor protections down, getting more millwork is in place. So several of the classrooms in B wing have their, their flooring in and their millwork in. We're doing a little flip flopping between the two different contractors flooring and millwork for which rooms they're in each day, getting their work done. Painter's also in there doing touch ups and, and getting ready for his final coat before we, the final coat that he'll do right at the end of the job. In, in the corridor in viewing also, we have the Wayne Scott ceramic tile going on the walls. We've worked out some of the details aesthetically of what we're looking to do in from phase one slightly differently with how the joint alignment runs here. So we've got direction over to the ceramic tile installer for that. Tac boards are planned to go into over these recesses in the existing block walls. These block walls do look a lot better than they did over in the first phase. So they are remaining unlike what we did in the first phase where we ended up putting drywall over them. So that's a, a cost not incurred in this phase that we did see before. We've also got the ceramic tile has been ongoing and grouting is nearly completed now in all the kindergarten bathrooms in B wing. And the teaching wall, the, the TV brackets are installed, the whiteboards, tack boards are starting to get installed in the classrooms as well. Turning on power in the rooms, getting lights and outlets operational as well. So well, along the way for finishes. Getting ready for, like Eileen had said, we're coordinating with Craig and Eileen for the owner furnished IT. Some of that is owner furnished contractor installed. Others are furnished and installed by the owner. So coordinating access and everything installed before Craig needs it sometime next week. And we're, we'll be there day to day coordinating with him as well. And again, more more, this is one of the interventionist rooms in B wing. TV brackets mounted, whiteboards are up and then in the student patterns and dealing as well. Going towards our summer work, this is the music room. Exterior windows are going in. So the music room. This was the temporary nurse temporary office during the first phase, temporary classroom last phase. But that went into a full demo and replacement of pretty much everything down to the shelf. So we are rebuilding that now. We do have the studs going up inside and the windows are going in on the outside. In the stage, all the air handle equipment's been set on the roof, roof penetrations, roof screens are all in. We did clean underneath the stage and removed all the dust that was under there. All the new duct work is onsite and being installed as, as quickly as we can in these areas. One of the things David mentioned was we, when we open things up, things aren't always as they appear to be on the drawings. So we did, did have some conditions in this area that we worked through, changing some details on the drawings to make everything work and be able to still complete. That work is, is pushing along, remains ongoing at this point. In the group labs, these are the ones off of the lobby between B wing and the A and C corridor over by the admin space. Believe last meeting I had showed where we had the slab infill. Since then, we've put the block walls up. Plumbing has been installed and inspected and tested with the building official. We're working towards starting finishes in here sometime next week. Over in B wing, which is the E and F, or sorry, E and F wing, which is stage four. Underground plumbing is ongoing. So we were tying into some of the existing storm and sanitary lines from the two thousands edition over in what we're calling D wing, the media center wing. So we're working through the corridor in ENF trenching this corridor to run the new mains and branch lines out to the states and to the roof drains. In this area, we did come across something we didn't anticipate here. Elevated slabs, we did, we found this on a Saturday. We did call out the structural engineer. He was out on Monday to review it and we do have some details now. So we're working on the repair for this slab, but this was a something completely unanticipated at that point. So this wing of the building did not have any as built from nineteen fifty-five when it was originally built. So no one, design team or contractor wise, or, or I believe anybody on the owner's side even knew that we had an elevated slab with a crawl space under it. So that was a bit of a surprise, something we're working through, getting some details and whatnot out of the structural engineer and KBA for, for the repairs there. We've also got the precast onsite for the ENF wings. We've got some of it staged in the courtyard for what goes in the courtyard side. Others are on the outside of the building towards the parking lot. So our goal is to get as many of those up on the building as well before the kids come back and we lose access into the courtyard with our equipment. Well, not lose access, but have limited access, limited hours. So trying to get as much of that done this summer as well. One thing I know we've talked about plenty here is the retaining wall. You can see here, the red line that snapped onto the retaining wall is the new grade mark. So the new sidewalk is being poured up to that point. So a lot of that paneling that was put on to the forms you'll see here is going to be covered. So that line does continue down, obviously, towards the loading dock side. It, it, there is more of the wall exposed, but that's a rough location of what the finished grade that you'll see in the end is. And over at the swing set, this is over by the baseball field. We did put the new sidewalk in there as well. We do have a large amount of the sidewalks in across the whole site. So a lot of the asphalt walks that were there for this past school year are being replaced with the permanent concrete walk. And in the lower lot, which is now the, the bus loop that comes in off of Fen Road, that retention system has been in and they're bringing back fill in now and prepping for asphalt. So the asphalt pave date is on the twenty-first. And we'll be coordinating around staff back on that same time. There's a, the upper lot, which was done last year, the, the staff will be able to park in that for the, the twenty-first while we do our work in the lower lot. So again, another thing that we're coordinating with Eileen and Jason Smith for, for access here on the site those days. So a lot of work going on, a lot of raids on top of each other, just trying to get it done. A lot of work to do this next few weeks, just to button everything up. Obviously, some areas aren't turning over. ENF wing turns over in mid-December. So that's later. The kitchen turns over in October time. So our big push is in the lobby and the cafeteria and the music room right now. And obviously the finishes that are ongoing in B wing. Anybody have any questions?
Any questions for Rich? Thanks for it's great pictures this week, huh?
There's a lot going, so a lot of pictures.
A lot going on. As Eileen said too earlier, the town manager is going to be there tomorrow morning. Eleven thirty was what was available to him. So if anybody would like to join that walkthrough, if you have a desire, you're more than welcome to, to come along. At eleven thirty, we'll meet in the trailer to sign in and then go up to the school. Barely up to you. Well, feel you have to, but if you want to, opportunity to meet him, introduce you. Well, Kim, you already know. But for some of us to, to meet him and introduce ourselves to him. And so there's a, there's a face to some of these names. Any other business pertinent to the committee? Anybody have anything? Lauren? Eileen? Rich? Quiet? Okay. Public participation. I think we still have zero. Well, you know, we might have somebody. Why can't it?
There's no public eye. Carol does have her hand raised though. Carol, did you have something?
Carol?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment. It, July was oppressively hot and humid. And just thank you to everybody who was working on the site with no air conditioning and in that terribly oppressive weather. It's truly appreciated.
Yeah, unfortunately, that's part of a business. I've got a trailer with air conditioning, so I'm okay.
Kim.
Well, yeah, Carol, I'm gonna echo what you just said. Absolutely. I I was out working in that that heat. Definitely not doing construction, but um it it was oppressive and thank you all. Um I. I'm working tomorrow, so I won't be able to do the um the walkthrough, but I was wondering if we could. Think about scheduling another time where we could um go and view. I mean, I. I would love to see what's going on, but I don't wanna just cruise up there on my own and and try to catch someone um.
We will do one uh Kim, right before school starts. Okay.
Okay.
See B wing done and we'll be able to walk through um EF wing. And actually get through it all without falling into one of the holes that's there right now. Yeah. Go ahead.
Did you mind? I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt you. Did I thought we talked about August seventeenth, but unless you wanna wait until September seventh, but. That's after.
No, I think the August seventeenth will probably work. So I just wanna make sure that the school is relatively safe for us to get in there. Um and with the other business uh pertinent to committee, I forgot to mention, actually, I made an executive decision, I think about a week ago. Um Carol, you will know this, there was um kinda like transit windows in the cafetorium on the east and west side. The new layout for the windows and the. Space, the whole, the cavity that's there, it did not work out. And then come to find out, we were. We, I mean, the design team, the contractors. Were driving themselves crazy on how they're gonna make this all fit and look good. And they were adding air condition, as you all know, guess where the duct work is? Right in front of those windows. So I I don't wanna say half, but in the beginning. Is half. So on the south side, it's half the window is covered by the duct work. They're at the same elevation. And obviously, as you go out further towards the north, the duck gets smaller. But you know, you literally to see out any light coming in, you would have to be in the middle of the room. Before I made that decision unilaterally, I went to Lou. He signed right on. Uh again, so we still have a full bank of glass from the floor to the ceiling on the north side. Um it's I we believe there's gonna be adequate light, I think, once it's closed in. You'll never know, Carol. You'll know because you were in there, but no one else is gonna know that those windows existed.
Honestly, Steve, that's gonna be great. What is happening here? Why is this making noise? Um that's gonna be great, because when you're trying to do a show. And you need that light blacked out, it's really hard to block it out. So.
We took care of that for you, Carol.
Yep, I think it's. Why did I ever retire? I don't know.
Okay, um we kind of already did comments by numbers, but anybody else have anything else? Motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, good night, everyone. We stand adjourned. It is. Six oh five.
Hey, good night.
Thanks, everyone.